City of Manona, Monday, December 1. Could you please call the roll?
Alder Radamacher, here. Alder Homquist?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder DePula?
Here.
Alder Kugel?
Here.
Alder Bernstein?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any minutes this evening. Do we have anybody here to make an appearance that is not on the agenda? Seeing none?
No.
Okay. We'll move past appearances. This is the, we have a public hearing tonight to receive any kind of public input regarding the proposed 2026 operating budget. We obviously don't have anybody in the room. And I'm assuming we've received any?
No written comments.
No comments? Are you here just to listen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Because we're at the public hearing portion, so you could say something if you like.
I'm just here to observe the presentation for the public hearing.
Okay. Great. Terrific. Thank you. With that then, we'll move to, there is no consent agenda, and we move to council action items. Number one, unfinished business, consideration of resolution 25-11-2844, adopting the 2026 operating budget, which we were talking about moving, shifting, yes, to the fee schedule.
I think if, if Mayor Council view would be so inclined, would like to ask if we could do the fee schedule discussion first, obviously, because that does impact the operating budget.
Yeah.
So even though it is a, the first and second reads are not lined up, would it be okay if we could do the fee schedule discussion?
Yeah. So we're going to take number two B, consideration of ordinance 12-25-800, updating the fees, fines, and penalties schedule, which the city administrator will go over first. And as a point of information, these fees, fines, and penalties, the schedule has already been integrated into the operating budget. So any changes to the fees, fines, and penalties would change the operating budget. And one option tonight, once we go through them, is consideration of taking this out of order, if the council is so inclined. So with that, Neil, could you go ahead and go over the fees?
Absolutely. We'll, we have a quick, attempted to essentially use the, the, the slides on the screen are essentially a summary of the, the highlighted yellow fees in your packet, which is actually part of the fee schedule. So it is the actual fee schedule itself, so anything yellow highlighted in yellow is what was amended, recommended for review. So this simply just attempts to summarize those. Current ambulance fee, $120 an hour for dedicated EMS unit, converts essentially to the overtime rate for basically two, two staff providers. Whoops, come back there. Chief McMillan is on and available, essentially to make sure we're covering our costs for when these are given. Chief McMillan is available if anyone has any questions on this particular fee.
Any questions on this one?
I guess I'm just curious if we could put a dollar amount in the proposed fee column, roughly? What are we talking here? Because the, the current fee is very clear, $120 per hour, done.
It is. And I'll certainly defer to the, the chief, Alder, but I think the situation is because depending on, on who we have on, that, that rate can be higher. So it's trying to identify essentially, make sure we're covering it, even though it may, the fee actually may be less than that number.
That's actually, that's, you hit it right there. Is there any way that it would actually go below 120?
Absolutely. It's just, it's making sure that they have the highest rate, I advise, so we cover it.
Got it. Okay.
Ryan?
I would only say for planning purposes, people need to know a dollar number, and it can't be an adjustable number. I mean, I, I see it as like, I understand it, of wanting to cover it from a personnel standpoint. But as a, as someone wanting this, I need to know what it's going to cost, even if it's at the highest end of it.
So maybe like a range from this to?
Not a range, a number.
A number.
Chief McMillan?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that.
Thank you.
So to address your concern, Alder, the way that special events work that need a dedicated ambulance, once we have determined they need an ambulance, or they're requesting an ambulance, they get a proposed hard cost that they have to pay upfront before the event. So this isn't, this isn't something they get charged after the fact. This is discussed and agreed upon, and part of the actual special event permit, before they even get their permit. So I propose changing it to this, because our, our dollar amounts change for every single event. It depends on who we have staffing, or what we have staffing it. The proposed fee, this would be the highest it could be, and currently our top earner on the fire department roughly makes $35 an hour. So when you add in overtime costs and benefit deduction costs, it's around the 120. How this was being applied previously is the $120 flat fee was being added to the permit, and then they were paying for staffing on top of that. What we're trying to do is make it so they're just paying for the staffing. And they pay what, whoever I get to work at, that's the cost they pay, but that's determined before the event. So it's not charged after the event.
So I think Chief DeBryan's point, what you're saying is that if somebody came to you with any events where an ambulance was required, you would schedule quickly so that you would know what that cost is for that special event well in advance of the special event?
Yes. It becomes part of the permit, the, the fees they pay upfront. And again, how this is determined is we, we charge them for the two, two members at the current highest overtime rate, and then they get money back depending on who I get to staff. But we're covering our costs no matter who I have providing the service. I'm, I'm happy to provide a more detailed breakout of how this is actually applied. We're trying to make the language and the fee schedule match how it's actually applied.
Okay.
So if you'd like, I, I can send that out before the next council meeting, so you can take a look at it, on how this actually works.
Okay. Brian?
I, I only have a slight concern that one event is being charged a different rate than another event, based on who you schedule. I would rather see us have a solid number, and make sure that number covers full expenses, regardless of who it is. It's just like, for example, when we fulfill a public records request, it's the lowest cost individual that can get the data. That's, that's what we charge. And so the same thing should be here. If we need an ambulance, whatever that cost is going to be, if, if our staffing ends up being a little less expensive, it ends up being a little less expensive, but there's still administrative costs that I think cover it. Just my opinion at this point.
Yep. Anybody else on this particular one?
I have a, go ahead.
Is there a, a number associated with this change in the budget and the revenue assumptions?
How can there be?
Yeah.
I mean?
There are no expenses or revenues identified. This is, for the special event, is a one, is a one-time.
It's usually minimal.
Yeah.
Okay. My, my point simply is, we could adopt this tonight, the rest of it. We could adopt this tonight and amend this provision later, or we could adopt everything except that provision, and then figure it out, if, if there wants to be better wording.
It doesn't impact the operating budget.
Right. Yeah. Right. Yeah.
My question to the chief was just, what was the impetus for the change? Is there a problem that's, you're trying to solve by, by doing things differently?
Again, it's trying to match up how we've been doing special events the last several years. Because how it's being proposed is how we've been doing it. I just, I'm trying to make the language match. And, and again, I'm, I'm happy to provide you the, the documentation behind this, and, and how we operate special events and how we staff them. The, the, the goal is to provide the service and provide the actual cost to the special event organizer at the end of the day. Because again, if I, if I give them this proposed fee of the two highest, we know we're covering our costs. And if I end up with two of my newer people, or it is a cost of less, they get some of that money back.
Okay. So again, this, this doesn't impact the budget, because it's the operating budget, but on this, and this is something that we could segment out from. Oh, we're doing, sorry. So go ahead to the next one.
Dog and cat licenses, essentially here. This is just reflecting, I think Director Hockner pointed out in finance, this is kind of reflecting what changes with county licenses have been, essentially, for those, those top four categories. So those increases are kind of mirroring what we're seeing at county increases. The kennel fee, something that was not really fully vetted out, kind of, not something we had very, jumped out as much as we had in terms of actually covering costs, in terms of what, what these might, we don't have a lot of these, but again, trying to make it a little bit more, more relevant, and then certainly just a, a minor increase in the late fee.
Any questions on this one?
Teresa? Just, when do kennel fees come into play? What, what is that? Like when you've, when you've apprehended a loose dog and need to store them somewhere temporarily, is that what you mean?
This is actually, if you're, for an operating, I believe this is for operating kennel, Alder. So if you actually have, if you're actually operating a dog.
I'm sorry. I got it.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay. Move to the next one.
Okay. Erosion control and stormwater permits. I believe Brad is available to answer questions. They're simply a $50 increase in both of these fees, essentially trying, attempting to kind of manage and cover staff time related to these permits. We do have some, for lease for TIF projects, we do have some ability to bring in additional costs, usually as part of the development agreement. But this, again, the overall impacts, one thing we have, I have discussed, I mentioned in finance and discussed with Brad, this does not necessarily take into, into account the actual scale of the project, the size of the project. At some point, we may want to consider more of a sliding scale for larger projects. But for right now, we're just simply proposing a $50 increase to help offset costs.
Okay. Any questions on this one? Okay, go ahead, the next one.
Okay. All of these licenses you see before you, on this screen here, these mostly liquor licenses and special licenses are, the fees, or the license fees are staying the same for each of these. However, there is generally a, a background check that is required for each of these licenses. We are essentially isolating that cost out for each individual related to these licenses as a $15 charge per applicant to process that particular background charge. So essentially, this, before that was kind of rolled into the, rolled into the fee, in some cases, we actually have multiple applicants for one particular license, and we end up not covering costs because they have multiple applicants under the same license fee. So essentially, we're just breaking that out as, as an add-on to all of these specific fees.
Questions on this one? Seeing none, let's move to the next one.
Okay. Exclusive use park permit fees. Again, these are what, just the ones that are, have changed. I believe Director Anderson is available to answer any specific questions. Again, these are shelter uses for the, for non-residents, these first two categories. The temporary structures is $100 in general versus now $100 per tent. Private utility locating, again, increasing that from 250 to 500. Picnic table charges, increasing that slightly, again, just for, since we have, I think we've had multiple events that need multiple tables. So again, just kind of adjusting that to accommodate more of the request. We actually eliminated the key deposit, and Director Anderson wants to talk about that. Added a specific school rate for proposed uses, I think that's during the week. And then there are three different special park, special event park use permits, based on the, the size of the event. So these 275, 575, and 1200. And Director Anderson is certainly available to answer any questions on these.
Any questions on these? None? Okay, go ahead. Move to the next one.
These are lake access permit fees, this is for boat launch. You'll see, these are all just minor increases to all of these categories. And then essentially, they also was with the actual kayak, canoe and kayak rentals, again, minor increases to both those for residents and non-residents.
Any questions on this one? Okay. So go to the next one.
Okay. Swimming pool fees. If council would recall to Director Anderson's budget presentation, the idea is trying to encourage more season passes versus individual, individual admissions. So his, this is the schedule that he has proposed for those. Also slight increases for swimming lessons, pool rentals, and then of course, and then actual open swims for residents and non-residents.
Next one? Any questions?
Real quick. Rachel. Just wondering why matching adult resident to youth and senior resident instead of keeping a, a discount for youth and seniors?
Jake, I think you're, are you still online?
I believe he is.
Yep, I'm here.
Great.
I think both our youth and senior non-residents is just an equitable way of where we see representation at the pool. And a lot of times, the youth especially, it's not a significant amount on either side of those versus the adult, the non-resident adult. We also don't have a great way of verifying residency, and so the ability for, I think we've seen more compliance with non-residents saying they're non-residents if their youth is admitted at a lesser rate than a non-resident youth rate.
Does that make sense?
I don't think I followed that. I'm sorry, Jake.
Try it again, Jake.
So the, what I'm seeing is that residents and, so for residents, it's all one price, but non-residents get a discount for youth and senior?
Not really a discount, it's just one standard rate. I think what I was trying to articulate was that there are times where we've had what we, our unverified resident, residency questions that we may ask, we just ask if you're a resident of Manona or not. And when we've had higher non-resident rates for youth, we felt like maybe there's more people saying that they were Manona residents. The, the thought was that if we have a similar fee for youth non-residents versus residents, that we might get more compliance with the adult non-residents saying they're non-residents. So we're making up the fees that way versus verifying residency at an outdoor pool is very challenging. And so we try to basically make it on-your-honor system as best as we can. Otherwise, we would be having very long lines at admissions, asking people for proof of residency.
So I understand that, I guess, why not make youth and senior cheaper than adult residents? Like, I guess it feels a little like residents have to pay more than, not, not pay more, but they don't get a benefit for being a resident.
I gotcha. I think maybe that didn't get caught on our reduction. Originally, we had a higher fee for resident and non-resident that we reduced down after discussions with the mayor. So I, I would recommend changing that to $7.
Do we know, Mark, can you recall if seven is, since these are in the budget already?
In the budget, as is.
As is. So, so if we reduce it to seven, are we anticipating that that would have a significant impact on the budget?
Jake, if I had a better idea?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be significant.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on this one? All right. Let's move to the next one.
Similarly, with river rink fees, here again, just kind of breaking these out, again, resident and non-resident for each one of these categories. Jake, if there's anything in particular you wanted to zero in on this one, otherwise you can see, trying to make, you know, private rink rentals a little bit more competitive, so there's actually slight decreases on those. Simply, again, with the birthday party package as well, all the other ones are relatively reasonable increases, I believe.
Okay. Any questions on this one? No? Okay. Let's move to the next one.
This is probably the most significant fee that is here, again, not, while not an operational impact on this. Director Anderson provided a comparison of park impact fees, park, parkland dedication fees, and also just actual dedication requirements in their ordinance across all of Dane County. Our current fee is, is listed at $714 per residential unit, but it's actually, it's been adjusted annually for CPI, so it's actually currently at $1,417. After reviewing, Jake sent me the, the schedule, and to kind of take a look at some of our nearest neighbors, kind of pulled these numbers out, is trying to be still competitive, and kind of really out of the four immediate closest ones, which I think are the highlighted columns in your packet on that great big comparison spreadsheet. Kind of came up and used a similar format of single-family and multifamily units, $4,000 a unit or $3,000 a unit for both of those. Essentially, those are both, still slightly less than, than three out of the four immediate neighbors. I believe the average, Mark, was around $2,000, we looked at, in terms of, we use the median number, in terms of looking at that. So we do see this as, as a limited opportunity in terms of being able to grab this fee. The one thing we did point out, not only in terms of visit comparable, it's just the land, the dedication fee for those other ones. Cities like Madison actually were less on their, they're actually more on their dedication fee, and they have a park impact fee on top of that. So it's actually almost twice what we have on some of those, those areas. So this, at least in terms of looking at our immediate neighbors, feel this is a comparable number to consider, but certainly available to answer any questions. And again, I think the data that is provided by Director Anderson and that great biggest Fritchy, Jake and I will attempt to answer any questions if anyone has any.
I would just say that we, Jake, I would add to that, that just as a point of information, we do make adjustments, which is to say, and those adjustments are, you know, which is to say, for instance, or I should say, we can make adjustments. For instance, if we have senior housing, or if we have affordable housing component or on development, you know, that, this is typically something that gets negotiated, particularly in the case of TIF financing. So, so, you know, this isn't etched in, it's important to know what it is, but just know that it's not etched in stone, it's not exactly the same. The single-family units would stay the same, and only for new builds, or this would not apply to additions or home improvements. Any questions about this one?
I just have a general question. Can you explain how this fee is lev, how is, how is it levied? How frequently? Is it a one-time fee? Is it an annual fee?
Yep. Correct. It is a one-time fee that is essentially be collected at time of building permit.
Other questions? Ken? Yeah?
Is there a reason we didn't include a park public improvement impact fee?
Impact fees are significantly more restricted, Alder, in terms of what you can use them for, as well as you have to have a formal study done. You have to identify very specific projects that you wish to use that fee for. And if you don't spend it within the allocated amount of time, you actually have to give that money back, which is another reason, certainly, I felt more comfortable with going with a little bit higher dedication fee. The dedication fee does not have the same restrictions as the impact fee does. So rather than split between the two, my recommendation was to go with just a little bit higher dedication fee, because I felt it had a little bit more opportunity and more, more control for the city to use those funds.
Our finance director's coming to the mic.
Yeah. It's in that case of brick and mortar, so like, like Iwaniki or something like that, it's for the shelter, or a wellhouse, if you're doing it for utility ones. It's usually like a year, you have to, you have to have the thing built within like X amount of years, it's usually around eight to 10 years. You have to have a study done, and they only pay, the study comes out, well, you only, the new homes, we only have to pay a portion of it, the rest would still be the homeowners would pay for, the rest of the residents. So you have to have an actual, like, brick and mortar develop, or building to have an impact fee. Can't just do it for improvement in the park, like for a trail or anything like that, has to be brick and mortar type situation.
So what I see a fee for stonewall, where do they identify it for 2,800 on multifamily? Like, that seems like a high fee per unit.
Well, it could be. I don't know if it's a brand-new development going in, and they got to put a shelter in there. That's what, so the shelter would be paid by that impact fee. So it's, you know, it's.
Right. You mentioned that there's sometimes an adjustment that can be made for senior or affordable housing. Did we do that in the case of the projects on the White Works property that North Point did?
We did not.
You did not?
There was not a request or anything like that.
Wasn't requested?
The only time I've been here that there's been a negotiation with parking dedication fee is at the current. So the current, in exchange for them not paying parking dedication fee, we got the, the building, where, you know, where the.
Concession stand.
Concession stand. So we got that instead.
Okay.
So instead of parking dedication fee.
So it's, my understanding, you're saying they have to ask for it, and otherwise?
It's a negotiation. It's in a TIF, it's a negotiation.
But they have to know that they can ask for it?
I assume they, at that part, I mean, they would have to ask, when they're dealing with the negotiation, I mean, bill price, I do. And it's part of the negotiation process.
With, with TIF developments, the, the development agreement is prepared, it explicitly states in there the amount of the park fee dedication amount, and those development agreements are always negotiated. So at, at the time the agreement is negotiated, the first draft they see from me has that number in there.
Yeah. I just didn't know if they were aware that they, if it's an affordable housing project, they could ask for some relief on this fee.
Nearly every one of the TIF deals we have done, the developers have been represented by land use attorneys, they're fully aware, and make it, they endeavor to negotiate many terms.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it, is it in ordinance form, or is it just practice?
It, it's in both. Our, our ordinance specifies that the required fee is per the fee schedule, which is posted, and then in the development agreement itself, it states the amount of the fee.
But not that they're, okay. I won't belabor it. Thank you.
I would also just point out, just as another point of information, that there are numerous other fees by department that are charged by other municipalities as well. For instance, you know, there can be a public safety impact fee. But again, that's, that can't be utilized for something like having a new officer, it has to be brick and mortar. And, and there's infrastructure, public works, fees, same thing applies. So, so, and so even though this may seem like a big leap relative to what other communities may be doing that surround us, it's, 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 you know, we still err on the side of, I think, being fair to the developers. I have one question, related to, obviously, ours has been adjusted annually for CPI. Is there any advantage to us adjusting for CPI moving forward?
I certainly would not have any issue with doing that, Mayor. I mean, honestly, that would be, I mean, I think it's a matter of just making sure, like even with this one, is making sure we just advertise that when we update the schedule every year. I think we just need to include that number into the, into the fee every year, make that calculation, and just put that fee in.
Yeah, Mayor, you can certainly do that. The only thing I would point out is CPI is a, a fine thing to use, but the, the point of these fees is to either require the developer to dedicate land or use money to buy sufficient land for parks that these developments are creating the need for. And so it really should equate to land value, and at least in Manona, the land values, as you know, appreciated a far higher rate, faster rate than CPI.
Yep.
So you can certainly do a CPI, but you're, you would almost be then underinflated. So you can certainly do a CPI, but you're, you would almost be then underinflated.
Maybe just a regular reevaluation of the fee would be in order on an annual basis.
More periodically.
Yeah.
Right, because I don't think we've increased it, because it's been maybe, because it's been tied to CPI, we haven't increased it much. Yeah.
In terms of the land use dedication fee, I don't think we've been willing to negotiate that part of it. I mean, we've had some, at least one, if not two, requests that they get TIF assistance to pay for the parkland fees, which we said no to. So I don't, I think, I guess what I'm getting to is this, the $3,000 number, to me, is pretty non-negotiable. Like, that's, don't ask for that in your TIF ask. So if we're, if we really, you know, want to favor senior housing or affordable housing, we ought to put it, we ought to put a number in here, in my opinion. But I don't know what that number is.
And I will point out in your comparative chart that Director Anderson provided, that several communities do have a different, certainly for senior housing, for 55 and over, they do have a lower amount for those types of projects. So that's certainly something that could be looked at.
Right.
And I would just say that also doesn't need to be necessarily, since this is something that, again, is not in our operating budget, it's separate from, it's something that can be dealt with separately, it doesn't have to be dealt with in the context of the operating budget tonight.
Just one thing, I don't know, Bill, if you want to touch on, was there a recent court ruling too about accepting land?
Yeah, we're now, we, if the developer is desirous of dedicating land, and the land that they seek to dedicate to us is consistent with our comprehensive plan, we are required to accept the land. That is probably the principal difference between impact fees and land dedication, is impact fees is money that the developer must pay. Fees in lieu of land dedication are exactly that. If they're unwilling or unable to dedicate land, then they pay this fee.
Any other questions on this one? Okay, let's go to this one.
Thanks for all the work that you and Jake put into this.
Yeah.
Director Anderson, yeah, that was a fantastic table, we were, you know, so I will give all credit to him on that one, so. Other fees, this is just an update to our certified survey map, fee from 200 to 250, and then instead of $25 a lot, up to $50 a lot, again, just pretty relatively minor fee increase for that. The one that is a new item is actually requiring a TIF application fee of $1,000. This is something that we, Director Plowman has taken a look at, and several of our neighboring communities do require this. It also, it certainly helps cover some of the staff and consultant costs related to reviewing an application, but it also kind of maybe serves as a, you know, a little bit of a filter, making sure it's not just somebody kicking tires, but it's actually somebody serious and really wants to put a project forward when they're really ready to go. Again, this was certainly presented to, Director Plowman has looked at several other communities, and it was actually presented to our CDA chair for, he has endorsed the fee as well.
Any questions on these? This is the last one. No? As.
So that's it?
Yeah. As discussed at the beginning of this conversation, I'm wondering if this body would be interested in suspending the rules, taking it out of order?
I will move to suspend the rules and take this out of order.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second? Okay.
Mayor?
Any further discussion? Yeah.
How does taking it out of order square with comments said earlier about, we can always go back and look at this later? Are we, is your intent to improve it?
This is just to suspend and take it out of the order. The next, you could, if we suspend the rules, then I would be looking for a motion to approve the fees, and that motion could include, as amended, which is to say you could take out those items that you may or may not feel, you know, may not feel comfortable with, and approve the other fees? If you so, if this body so desired.
I guess I was just, and perhaps I misunderstood it, it felt to me like there were a couple points raised that would require more research before we voted, but I may have misunderstood.
I think on a couple of them, Alder, certainly if they were, they were fees that did not affect the operating budget.
Sure.
It was certainly then not a concern, we could, we could proceed with, in terms of either adopting them as is and making an amendment to those as we go forward, or you could pull specific ones out and we could address those at a later date.
Right.
Certainly, from a staff standpoint, we are comfortable looking at either one of those.
Okay. Right, there were two in particular that people were concerned about, and both of those do not impact the operating budget.
Okay.
So I'm not saying there has to be an amendment, but I'm just saying one, one way to accomplish it.
No, good, I'm good with that.
So we have a motion on the table? In a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Rules are suspended? Do I have a motion to approve the fees, fines, and penalties?
I'll try to make a motion.
Okay.
To approve an amended version, taking out the EMS fee for special events, and modifying the resident youth and senior fee to $7 instead of 8.
Okay. I have a motion.
Could I ask for clarity? Did you say taking out the EMS fee?
From consideration in this motion.
From consideration.
Consideration.
Understood.
I'll second.
Okay. Then I have a second from Rick.
So then, just for clarity, then, you're taking out the amended EMS fee, meaning until that comes back to this board, the pre-existing EMS fee will stand?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. Yeah. Okay, so I have a motion, and I have a second. Any other discussion on this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Miss, this one's a roll call.
Oh, so, is it? I was just about, I thought it would go there. Clark, could you please call the roll?
Alder Honquist.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder DePula.
Aye.
Alder Kugel.
Aye.
Alder Bernstein.
Aye.
Alder Bratamacher.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'd like to propose another amendment, that we postpone the item for parkland dedication fees until we can find that number that Doug suggested.
The motion was to approve the fees as stated, with the two exceptions that Alder Kugel stated.
Right.
So right now, as of a couple minutes ago, you've passed the new fee schedule.
If I could just add, I don't think there's a problem with going ahead and updating the fees, the parkland dedication fees, and then, but I would like us to look at what, you know, a lower number potentially for affordable housing, so, but we don't need to do that tonight.
Right.
We'll bring that forward as quickly as we can.
Okay. Okay, are we okay?
Just, just a comment. I appreciate the need for formality, but the intention of the Alder was, I mean, if we could, it seems to go against some degree of common sense that, you know, simply by misunderstanding the Roberts Rules of Order, that an Alder, my colleague, would not be able to bring forth an amendment, and the window closed in a matter of moments, and I understand the need for formality, and I understand that Alder Wood has sort of opened up the door again for the future, but must we be so unforgiving in these moments where?
I would actually, especially uncertainly, like votes like the budget, Alder, I would say absolutely, we need to be very, more than any other time, in terms of the votes, we need to be very formal with this. So, and it certainly does not prevent, it doesn't prevent, I think, we still want to pursue the Alder's intent, which is to bring that forward.
The intent.
So there is, there is a path forward, but it, the vote is, what the vote having is, it doesn't necessarily change that, so. We're happy, staff is happy to bring that forward with a very clear recommendation and basis for that number. Happy to do that, Alder.
That's great.
Yeah, I am as well, as Mayor, so. All right. So we have approved the fees, fines, penalties, and that takes us. That takes us back up to number one, a consideration resolution 25112844, adopting the 2026 operating budget and establishing a tax levy. Excuse me. Mark, I think we need an update.
Yes. Couple things, I handed out, there's an email sent out today, I handed out a hard copy in front of you. So we had two things that affect the budget amendments, overall property tax levy. So we end up having total seven amendments. We had a situation in one of the departments where we have open enrollment currently right now for health insurance, two individuals, part-time workers, decided they want to take the city's insurance, so an impact of $9,000 related to the library department. So we're proposing to add that in as a budget amendment. If you add that one, it gets approved, and if you add the other, three other ones that affect the property tax levy, we'd be over by fifty, almost $5,400. So to do that, you'd have to either make a cut, another service, propose something else, if you want to go over the, if you want to approve all the amendments in here. So currently, right now, like I said, if we do it, we'd be $5,300 over the property tax limit. We also in here will have a change. As you're aware, we also parled last week, last meeting, some debt, one debt related to general debt service. I put in here what I projected based on working with the financial advisor, Jeff, what we thought the repayment schedule was. It came in lower than we projected, so there is a budget amendment to reduce the debt service for that. And that would affect one later on with using fund balance at number six, so. Just wanted everybody to know all that, so that's all I have.
So I'll just remind everyone that we, you know, we can't go over the levy limit, and it has generally not been our practice to use fund balance for what is an operating expense, because of course, that would be, that would be carried forward. You know, we don't want to commit, overcommit ourselves by using it effectively as our reserve fund for operating expenses. So with that, I'm happy to go through the amendments, starting with 2601. Brought forth.
Was there a tech line?
Hmm?
No.
I lose your name on hold.
Yeah.
Mark, you want me to put them up?
It's me if you want to.
There we go. Okay, Mark, do you want?
Yeah, this is just change in the debt service, reducing it by 37,000, $3,7,800 for the renewal payment schedule. So it decreases our property tax levy by 7, $37,800.
I'm with to approve a budget amendment, number one.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Oh, this is 37, so does that mean a roll call?
Not a lot of budget amendments.
Okay.
Yeah, budget amendments are just a roll call.
They are?
Yeah, I believe so.
Oh.
Yeah, it's just a budget.
Sorry, I always understood over $25,000 you had to be a roll call. That's what I was told.
For expenditure. This is just budgeting, not expenditure. You're certainly free to do a roll call if you wish.
Right.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, abstained. Okay. Next one, 2602, brought forth, again, this relates to the employees.
Yeah, this is the library health insurance increase for the, it says one, but we just found out today a second one, so it's through two other employees. So the total effect was $9,074. The other option is the library will need to find $9,074 to cut.
Mark, you're sure it covers both, not just the one?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it does. Yeah.
Mark, did I also, could you say the last thing again, something about the library?
I mean, the other option would be not to increase the property tax, would be to find other services to cut.
Within the library's budget that I hear you say?
Or whatever you want, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? Do I have a motion?
Move approval, budget amendment number two.
Do I have a second? I have a second? Yep. Doug?
So my, my quest, obviously, we have to, we have to budget for this amount, but it did get me to thinking about why not, why, like, we have such small departments, but we make each departmental budget pay for health insurance, so that you have big swings like, like we're seeing tonight. And if it was, you know, the library's not even one of the smallest departments, it just seems like there's a way, there's ought to be a better way, a fairer way, I guess, to do it between departments, because the way we do it now, it's really something totally beyond the control of the manager, of how many people take health insurance. And, you know, they may, they may have more people, a higher percentage of their people taking it than some other department, but they have to come out, they got to come up with the money out of their amount.
It is a tough one. When I originally first started, we would try to budget more for these situations, but as the leviness went more effective, couldn't budget for a single person, even though they didn't have health insurance, because you had to, you know, you had 1% increase to 0% increases to your levy.
Right.
So you had to cut somewhere, so you reduced them down to what their actuaries were. It is tough. Some years, some years we've had done that, where we just did, you know, you can increase your non-personnel, because the non-personnel was accounted for, that's probably the wrong two directions, you know. Lately, even, like, years ago, we used to write the directions, well, the non-personnel would be, regardless of what it was, that was just covered. The only thing you could increase was your, your non-personnel, so you could do it that way too, so you wouldn't have that effect. Then you ran into trouble. If you run in, it just became simpler, I think, when everybody got their same amount. I mean, you can do it either way, just say, okay, your non-personnel, that's subject to your directions for your department.
And I don't, I mean, I don't really know the data, maybe it is, maybe coverage is fairly similar across departments, I have no idea, but.
It's pretty similar. Most people now have almost gone to family, there's not a lot of symbols, and there's not a lot of people having, you know, I think these are kind of the last two or three people that are on our health insurance.
Okay. Okay, so almost all the eligible employees take it?
Majority of them.
All right.
It does happen a little bit with, I guess, it does happen a little bit with the parking rack. A lot of times, the first couple of years, they'll hire someone that's fairly young, starts offering at school, and they'll get the opt-out, because they're on their parents' insurance. So had, I think it's like three thousand dollars of insurance. Get the opt-out, which is equivalent to three thousand dollars, and then they switched to single. So they got to make up for that. So it does happen every once in a while.
Right.
The opt-outs. These are kind of unique ones. Most people who are part-time or have insurance already, this is, I don't know what happened on these two, family situation changes and other things.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on this one? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, extensions, motion forms?
Mayor? I'd like to withdraw budget amendment twenty-six oh four and twenty-six oh five.
You're withdrawing?
Three. But that's, we're jumping ahead.
I think for the current numbers.
It says four and five.
Oh, wait.
We're at twenty-six oh three.
I believe it's three and four, Alder.
Oh, three, twenty-six oh three.
Yep.
Twenty-six, so you're.
And four.
There's two sponsors.
Twenty-six oh three, twenty-six oh four.
You're withdrawing?
Withdraw. Well, I would just point out, somebody could make a motion, and it could be seconded, but I'm not going to, since we don't have the money for this.
Well, right now, we're currently, after an amendment, we have two thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars from the.
Yeah.
So are you saying that you concur with the withdrawal?
I am, I am not going to move approval of this, so yes.
Okay, okay. So we are withdrawing this two.
That was just the one, for sure.
Just the one, one at a time.
So I thought you said both.
He did mention both. I think the vote was, that was.
There wasn't a vote.
I mean.
Oh, three and oh four.
Okay, oh, three and oh four, both.
Yeah, I don't agree on four.
Okay.
You don't agree on four?
No, I, I.
So we don't have a motion.
No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to move that one either, so that's fine.
Okay.
I'll let it go.
That takes us to twenty-six oh five.
Which is the two thousand dollars for AI.
Yeah, I.
Do I have a motion?
Well, I don't know what Alder DePul is thinking, but I know that the staff is not really interested in getting this money. So therefore, you know, even though, I guess I'm, I am a little concerned about resistance.
As much.
To the, to this, because all I was talking about, all this amendment would do, was provide a very small amount of money for training and education. And my thought was that it would be enough for one or two people, key people to get some education, not free, no, no. I mean, I know there's free stuff out there, but if it's something important, we ought to put some resources to it, but.
And this would pay for the courses at UW Extension.
Right.
So I guess I.
So let me just say, because I think it's, I don't want to. I would prefer that staff speak for themselves, but I would just say that it's not a resistance. There's not a fear, there's not a resistance. It's just feeling like it's not yet necessary. For the first time in many years, our staff is appropriately compensated, and there's enough coverage in the office with a new, with a new office person covering the front desk, that for the first time, our administrative and IT staff feels like they have a little bit of breathing room. That said, I mean, like, like to a normal job, as opposed to feeling overwhelmed a lot of the time. And, and that said, the staff is also, you know, implementing two or three different pieces of webware, new webware, in terms of the agendas and the project management and other things, and going to two-level authentication and dealing with other security issues. And so it was just, it was just felt that they didn't need to, they didn't feel like they needed this money right away to be able to explore AI with a little bit less pressure, and the feeling that they don't want Manona taking the lead as a municipality on this, that they would like to see what other municipalities are doing, and would like to spend some time exploring. And I, is that a fair assessment of where they're at?
Yep, if I could, just, it's, you know, certainly, staff is not, is proceeding on, and trying to build some resources on this. In fact, we have, you know, right after our last discussion regarding this topic, signed up for, there's a organization called the Government AI Coalition. It's actually based out of the city, the city of San Diego's initiative has started this. When I first started researching, it came through information through the International City County Management Association. So organization that I started kind of just reviewing, figuring it was going to be, you know, probably, you know, maybe several hundred, you know, maybe communities. And there's actually thousands of US municipalities that are involved in this coalition. So they actually have five or six working committees, everything from security to data management to, to, using it to, for efficiency purposes. It's incredibly detailed organization. And in terms of, you know, there is no cost to join this group. So in terms of looking at, they have an entire resources section for policies and for other applications. So I've just begun to just start reviewing the resources that are available there. But I certainly think by the time we get through a lot of that, and actually being able to talk to a lot of the other communities that are involved in this organization, we very well may be in a position where we think we're ready to proceed with, with doing that. You know, I would, I just kind of, a little bit, little tongue-in-cheek, just remind everyone that we do not have an IT department. We have, we have Leah, who supervises our IT consultant, that is not the same thing as having a twenty-four-hour, regular, fully-staffed IT department. We don't really have that. So certainly figuring out the best way to proceed, you know, we agree that there is definitely some need to, need to proceed. I think our main, I think the only main concern is visiting with a couple of staff on that, is certainly figuring out and being very careful about what sort of data sets we, we use to actually engage AI, and what sort of records that would generate, how, you know, what sort of records are okay to engage and upload in that, whether it needs to be a closed system, where it's just the city accessing it, versus something that would be more open, where the public could access. So I think that's really where our primary concern lies at this point. So it's just, again, we're just peeling back the onion a little bit, in terms of looking about, as we, as we solve one question, we answer one question, two or three others certainly pop up a little bit. So I think there's certainly an opportunity and a resource, certainly from just an, an information standpoint, that this organization and this will allow us to do. But I think there's also going to be, the real value will be identifying similar communities of our size and budget, that we can actually reach out to and ask how they're, they're engaging with it, particularly if they're here in Wisconsin, which we have identified multiple partners in that group who are from Wisconsin. So we do think, there is opportunity to proceed and move forward on this. We think for now, we certainly can do so. Again, if something comes up before six months into this, and we decide, hey, we got, there's a very clear opportunity for a training or conference to send, send Leah or somebody to, to attend that, we will certainly bring that forward to this body and do that at that time, when we actually have a little bit more of a solid question of, other than, we don't know what we're doing, and we need to know what we're doing, how do we, how do we get there. And we think, at least the intermediary, the immediate steps is to kind of engage this organization a little bit upfront before we make that decision.
Good. Well, right now, there's two thousand eighty-seven dollars or something.
Two thousand three eighty-seven.
Three, sorry.
Close.
So hopefully, if you come back later, that money will still be there.
Understood, Alder.
I have a question. I don't disagree with anything that Alder Wood just said. I think it is necessary to get training on AI, but my, my question is, I'm under the impression that training is available at no cost.
On, to a certain, to a certain level, Alder, in terms of, I'd say at a very ten-thousand-foot level, how things are, you know, what it can be used for, what sort of, you know, the more detail suddenly you get to, you know, what sort of prompts should you be using in terms of entering into your AI, in terms of how do you manage the data that gets uploaded or engaged with your AI. Starting with this, in terms of how do you actually oversee the AI outputs, not only the inputs, but actually tracking it, what's the best way to do that. So regardless of, I think, most functions, if it's, if it's used properly, it's not actually eliminating the human element of it, but it is, it is adjusting the human element to actually reviewing what the actually AI is, is producing. So you still need, our experts are still need Dan Stefani to take a look at if he uploaded something on the equipment management, or if he looked at road ratings that they actually had the AI do that for. Dan is still going to need, to need to review that output. So it's, it's understanding those type of relationships. So I think in terms of, well, we're, this first year is basically figuring out, what are the questions we need to ask?
Right.
Is really our first step.
And I also appreciate that you can't know what you don't know. And so going to training would help you figure that out. So again, training is necessary, but I think there's training at no cost. How, and I also agree with Alder Wood, that when something's important, you have to budget for it, otherwise it never happens. So how do we make sure that training happens at no cost? Like, how do we hold that accountability?
I mean, there's training, I know there's no training, but I think there is going to be some training that's going to happen at some cost. Maybe it's also just training on the first chat GPT, or one of the AI just tested out, too. So there's some cost could go there.
I mean, city employees are already using it. You know they, I mean, of course they are. So, you know.
But there's, but obviously, as we all know, there's different levels of AI that we're talking about.
Sure.
We're all using it every day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the AI that we're talking about.
And I am, too. I'm talking about, like, let's feed this webpage, you know, let's condense and summarize this webpage, let's make it more succinct, let's, you know, to things like that, which certainly could be helpful for the city. All right.
I mean, I've been pretty much looking at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, UW Extension, Education Through Municipalities, and they've got a one-on-one and a two-on-one course that is all about, you know, how AI is used by Wisconsin local units of government, risks of using AI, including privacy, security, copyright, bias, et cetera, organization risk mitigating AI risk, introductory AI training exercises, focuses on creating more effective prompts. And then a two-on-one course, that's a little bit more in-depth, and each one of those is two-point-five to three hours, and its best practices amongst municipalities that are already using it in Wisconsin. So why would that not be beneficial? Why would budgeting two thousand dollars to potentially take advantage of these courses through UW not be beneficial?
My answer to that, Alder, is it very well might be. We don't know if it would be at this point or not. It really depends on exactly what, how many things. One example, just to be example, the first sample policy I pulled off of this coalition page was an outstandingly detailed AI policy. Fantastic. I was reading the details and all the different things it covered and how to manage all this. And then the more I realized and read, started reading it, it's like, oh, but they're referring to an organization that has a chief information officer, a chief information security officer, a chief, a chief data officer. I mean, they had all of these. So obviously, it doesn't scale. So I'm just saying, without knowing, without being able to view it in advance, just going in and signing up for the class, I would say that there's probably a fifty-fifty shot, in terms of what's actually applicable to the way we want to use it versus not. So I think we just, again, I think there's some free resources we could take advantage of, to make sure we can evaluate these types of courses and opportunities as we go forward.
Yeah, I would just say, Patrick, it would also depend on how many people were we going to put through that course. I think what we're hearing from our staff is because we don't have an IT department, and our IT person actually that on contract is spread unbelievably thin, just trying to keep us all safe, in terms of cyber activity and our computer systems running. They don't feel like they have the capacity to train other people.
I was talking about training, not people to train.
Let me just finish. I just, I'm just saying, I just started by saying, it would depend on how many people we wanted to put through training. If it was a scenario where we're expecting some staff to train other staff, or we were talking about putting, I don't know, we talked about putting all department heads through the training, I don't know who we would put through, because we haven't answered those questions yet. We haven't, we haven't asked those questions yet. But, so I'm just saying, if it involved some staff going and training other staff in order to be consistent across the department in the use of whatever they learned, then I think that would be more challenging. That's all I'm, that's all I'm pointing out. I'm not saying yea or nay, I'm just pointing out. That would be another challenge. Because I know that our, currently, Leah and the IT administrator don't feel like they are in a position to be able to train other people.
Right, and that has never been any, what this is about. I mean.
Did you say it was, or was it just sharing information on AI?
Okay, well, that's, the point is to get training for our key staff. And then, and I, my, what I heard, they say during the committee, the whole, was that we needed to develop an AI policy. And it seems like we need to have somebody on staff who has gotten themselves trained and educated, whoever that is, before we go about trying to write the policy. Like.
I don't disagree. I'm not disagreeing at all. I would also say what she said, having watched it twice or three times since the last meeting, what she also said was, staff wasn't using AI, and she was perfectly okay with that, and they would, and they both said they would prefer to slow-walk it, because it was more than they wanted to take on at the moment. So, that's all.
I was just going to say, I know she said staff's not using it, but then I think police chief.
With the exception of public safety, because they have Lexi Paul.
Yep. And I just, this came up in public safety last week, but I don't know if Chief McMillan's still on, but he is going to a training for AI for fire. So I understand the, like, hesitation of time commitment to really dig in in the way that we should, but I think it's even maybe more concerning that we don't have a policy on it, and that there are certain areas that are seeking out training on their own, without that policy in place, and not knowing where to start with the policy.
Mayor?
Yeah?
I mean, I, I do know that people in the Parks Department use ChatGPT. I mean, that, that's AI. You know, we, we want to write this email with a certain tone, or, I mean, I've worked with members to put together a webpage, and the text that was suggested to me came from ChatGPT. So I know people, more people are using it than we think. So I, can we just ask how much this course costs? Is it one or two hours? Is it just a tiny little primer?
Budgeting the money doesn't mean it's going to all be used. We're budgeting that amount, up to that amount for training.
What, what is the cost of the, I mean?
It doesn't, you have to ask.
Oh.
And fill out the form. But there's other training, too. I wonder if there was, I wonder if there was debate over this one. We went from horseless carriages to automobiles.
I mean, I, and I, I don't think, I agree with Alder Wood, that I don't think anybody is expecting one staff person to train the other. Like I said to the mayor before, I'm on the fence. I can go either way on this, but, I mean, I don't think it has to be a really big deal. It can just be an hour or two of, you know, getting the basics, and then figure out what you want to do with it from there forward.
In the interest of bringing this.
Yeah.
Debate to a close, considering it, if I did my math right, this is one one-hundredth of one percent of the total city budget. I will move approval of section amendment twenty-six oh five.
Approval accepted.
Approval a second? Any other discussion? Just for the record, this was, it's never about the smallest percentage of what it is, we're trying to stay under a levy. Okay, so.
No, I meant, I was referring to the amount of time that we'd spent talking about that much, tiny, as a budget. This would keep us.
And as I also said, by the way, to Alder Rattamacher, I really don't care if it's in the budget or not, um, I'm just saying, it may not be used very much, because the staff doesn't feel like they have the capacity to take it on as much as we might like. So, um, certainly not saying it's not important. Um, so with that, we have a motion, and we have a second. All of us in favor, say aye.
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 I vote, I vote no.
Nays.
I vote no.
Nay. Okay, abstentions.
Yes.
So that takes us to amendment 2606. Mark?
Yeah, this is the, the transfer of the funds to the debt service to offset the levy, with the change from amendment number one, with the repayment schedule change, to get it down to a, I mean, at least a zero, I guess, for the debt service would be, um, 301,555. I don't know if that's.
Okay.
You're okay with that number?
Yep. So I'll, I'll move amendment 2606 in the amount of 301,000, what was it?
555.
555.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And Mark, this would still leave us well about the 20%.
Yes.
Any questions? All right, Brian.
Can you just recap why the change in the value, the amount?
Why the amount?
Yeah.
Because we, the first amendment was for the debt service decrease for interest, so we don't need as much property tax money to balance to zero from last year. So we're trying, what Doug is trying to do, if you look at the summary page, trying to make certain the debt service increase is zero from last year, so this brings it to zero. The Western Renner, where did that go? 339,500 minus amendment number one. To reduce, then, reduce the property taxes by, the debt service, 37,800.
So you're saying this number changed at one point?
Yes.
And it changed because of that borrowing?
Yes, yeah. Their interest was lower than what I projected from initial.
And because of that adjustment, this number changed, which then, then it changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, just following the, the dollar.
I have a motion, and I have a second, anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post?
Sure.
Abstentions. Motion carries. Takes us to budget amendment number 2607. Mark, do you want to explain this?
Yeah, this was a, kind of, we did, we did a budget analysis with Will, the heading, Steve and me, we took money out, we thought for the app, the loan app, $2,500. But he already ticked it out already. It's a mistake in my head, because I assume that's, we said he hadn't taken out yet, but he said he did. But we would have adjusted their account anyways in the media fund, because they were over the 3% requirement, so we would have reduced something. So talking to Will, he said he would, he would have reduced the media equipment, put that back in, that's awesome, so.
So one's just offsetting another, it's just a shift.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I spoke, yeah, I spoke with Will today, and I'm going to be withdrawing this amendment. That was.
It's zero effects, so.
So I, then I don't know what.
So I am unclear as to what you're trying to accomplish, by withdrawing.
Well, maybe I don't understand either. I was.
Yeah, he'll manage his budget in the tool, so we're going to figure it out. So he's fine.
It's a kind of a moot point.
It sounds kind of squishy.
Well, I mean, I don't know why he changed his mind, so I guess that's more him. He must think he's okay.
So I'm unclear, what this, what this amendment is saying is that there was a double subtraction of the 2,500 for the act.
Correct.
Yeah.
So Mark is adding the 2,500 in.
Right, but be.
And then because Will was over what we requested every department group, 3%, he said it's okay to take the 2,500.
Twice.
No.
He said it's okay to take it.
No, to take 2,500 out of the equipment budget.
Oh, the cap.
Which he was, which he felt like he was very comfortable in, in terms of the amount he had in equipment, to cover the 2,500 that went back in. So the net was zero to the operating budget.
Correct.
That's what he, that's what this amendment does, it just shifts where the 2,500 is in budget.
And that media equipment is non-capable, really, I know, so it's just like, we need parts for something, it's not the actual.
Yeah, right. So, so then this is really not the amendment that I originally proposed. I'm not against this amendment, but it sounds like a different path forward has been found.
Well, the last thing to Will, this is where.
It's fine.
I think the change is being, the 2,500 going back in, but there was no indication of the 3% over and making it zero.
Right, he would have, yeah.
Like, that wasn't part of the requested amendment. The requested amendment would have been to add 2,500.
Just put it back in, just put it in, right.
There would be a second amendment to subtract 2,500.
Right.
You melded the two together.
Exactly. Thank you, yes.
But he melded the two together after talking with Will.
That's what I was.
Who said that it was okay, because he doesn't generally spend for miscellaneous equipment stuff.
No, I, I think what Brian said is exactly.
The confusion is, Will told that to Mark, didn't tell that to the two.
That's okay.
Alders that made the amendment.
Right.
So the amendment that came forward was not what we're.
Right, exactly. And that's, that's fine.
It's, it works out.
It works out, yes.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve this amendment?
So withdraw, she would.
Well, no, I'm not going to withdraw this amendment, I would have with, whatever, yeah. This is fine.
Right, this is the correct amendment, so you're not withdrawing.
The corrected, it's, it's not my amendment, it's fine.
But Will still said he doesn't want to switch these two.
No, he didn't say that to me, so it's not true.
Gotcha, okay.
Maybe, there seems to be some misunderstanding, but.
Who's on first?
At the end of the day, there's no impact to the budget, and it sounds like a solution has been found, and I think that's, that's great, that people are finding solutions.
Do you want to move approval?
Do I have a motion to approve this amendment?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post? Abstentions. Motion carries. Okay. That leaves us over the levy, does it not?
No, no.
No, we're 387,000, under.
Yeah.
Did you say 300?
387.
We have money to spare.
Jesus.
Yeah. Getting back to a party.
We're right on.
Small one.
So it leaves us at a total increase to the property tax levy overall, for all of them, is 115,282. The impact on a median home from this year to last year is $4. So that's the impact overall.
From the operating budget?
Yeah, no, it's the overall.
Overall.
The debt service.
And that includes us putting that money back into debt service, yeah. So that's, helps bring that down, I guess.
And why is that the one times 70, keep on the exact dollar?
73.
So you went from 73 to 4, that's good.
Did you say $4 for a median home? It's not for 100,000?
Oh, for 100,000, the, uh, 100,000 for this year. It's a little weird, but it shows a negative 49.
Really?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, because of the way the mill rate dropped, so that's why there's a negative.
Well.
So it is $4 per median home, not per 100,000? That's, I think what Rick was asking, is are you sure it's not for, per 100,000?
Yeah, no, it's for median home, yeah.
Okay.
But the overall tax bill with all the other districts is 740.
So that's from school and.
Oh, oh, oh.
So the overall tax bill went up, nine points, 9.7% increase, or an increase of 3,453,000. That's the overall, so the overall tax bill to residents will go up to 740.
740.
Forty.
For, for a median household?
Yes.
And out of the 740.
We're at $4.
736 are from other entities.
Correct. Yes, not from Monona.
I think I see a press march. Big, big point at that in your art.
Yeah, that's, that's what all the changes, yeah. But the Dane County went up 6.13%, schools 16.97%, um, mass and college 5%, more, less than 5%.
Is this mostly because of the amendment we passed with the general fund?
Yes, but that is that, that's, the school ref, the school is up because of the referendum, they're still in their phase of the referendum.
Oh, right, right.
Okay. Other questions before we take a vote on the operating budget as amended? Yes?
We need Mark to tell us the numbers that go in the resolution.
God, you just had them up there, sorry.
Those are prechanges, pretty close, but I don't know. Just remember, you did it on the front.
Oh, um, we need the property tax levy required to finance the 2026 budget is, so let's.
Say that number again, 12 million?
Twelve, one, sixty, one, one, two.
Twelve, one.
And 50 cents. 120. I thought you said one, one, two. 12 million.
160,000.
Yep.
120.
120.
0.5.
Yep, got it.
And then the second, it goes on, and the tax rate to be established at blank per thousand dollars of assessed property value.
6.090281.
Okay. Any questions about that?
Will this amended document be available later?
We'll have it on.
Part of the minutes.
Part of the minutes, thank you.
Yeah, it'll be in the minutes, yeah.
But you post the adopted budget.
We do post the adopted one.
On the website.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, and remember, if you can't wait until the adopted budget is posted, you can always go to the video and watch it, and over and over again.
You bet.
Uh, okay, so with that, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
We have a motion, right?
Original.
No, because you want the numbers first.
Yeah, I don't believe, I don't believe there was ever a motion.
I know.
I think we want right to amendments.
We want right to amendments.
So I'll move approval with the numbers that Mark provided.
Second.
Any other questions? Uh, would you please call the room?
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder DePula?
Aye.
Alder Kugel?
Aye.
Alder Bernstein?
Aye.
Alder Rattamacher?
Aye.
Alder Combs?
Aye.
Just one thing, just so residents know, I'll file the taxes with the county tomorrow, we probably won't get them back out the door until early next week, because the county has to print them, takes a couple days, and by the time we get it, we'll probably, Monday, we'll probably start sending the taxes out. We'll expect them tomorrow.
Okay.
All right.
Great, thank you. Uh, I just want to thank the staff, thank you, staff, um, and thank this council, I think, $4 per household, median household is.
Amazing.
Pretty dang good.
Pretty dang good, that's right. And I, you know, um, on the heels of the referendum, I think it was important. So, uh, so I, I appreciate it, and I appreciate all the staff's hard work, thank you for hanging out, as always.
Thank you.
It's a big accomplishment, too.
It is.
It's the biggest thing we do all year.
Yeah, that's right, indeed. Okay, that takes us to number G1B, consideration of resolution 25-11-2045, approval of amendment to the Police Department vehicle pursuit policy to include the grappler, the grappler device, as an approved pursuit intervention tool of public, public safety. Sorry, I can't help it. Go ahead.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Any other discussion? Any, would you like to add any?
My humble recommendation is that you force us to say the grappler, how you've said the grappler, so.
For marketing purposes only.
Yeah, I, I've had a couple of discussions with some of you here, and I've hopefully answered any questions, but I'm here to answer any more that you might have. Couple of media inquiries I've had, I would say enthusiastic media inquiries with print and TV media. It's Monday after a holiday, so I was not able to entertain those today, and I told them, well, we'll see what the decision is here today, and I'll be able to provide any comment, yea or nay, tomorrow. That's it, I have no other updates.
Was there any feedback that was received directly to you regarding concerns about the suggested amendments?
No.
Any provided to the Public Safety Commission?
No. And we just had a meeting last week, Wednesday.
And any received by the city through any chains of email, web-based service?
Even, I would say, no, even through social media, we have not had any, any comments.
All right.
I have a question, I think the last time we talked about it, you were not sure, and you may still not be sure, how long it would take to get it and install it, and be trained in it.
It'll take about a half year.
Okay. Um, and I raise that only because, um, last time, we learned that it's a one-time use for the, right, for the actual strapping, and that every time you buy more straps, it's $400 per strap, is that right?
Per deployment, correct.
Per deployment. So, since we didn't, I mean, this isn't, I know we're buying the device from, not from, uh, operating funds or capital funds, but in terms of the $4 per, if for some reason we had a, a run on the use, needed use of the grappler, is that something that you anticipate using that same one for at this point, for the six months we might need it, or you would come back for an amendment, or how would that?
Depends on how many, hopefully this discourages, uh, people fleeing from your police department. It's hard to tell. I mean, we're, we'd be potentially the first in our state. What I would say is that with that dollar amount, I'm comfortable saying that we have funds in our operating budget to, to currently fund that. If we're talking 30 of these, then yes, you will see me before you, saying I need to buy in bulk from Costco. funds in our operating budget to currently fund that, if we're talking thirty of these, then yes, you will see me before you, saying I need to buy in bulk from Costco.
I don't know, the Kirkland brand.
Yeah, the Kirkland brand.
The tire deflation devices that we use, they're one-time use too, right?
They are, they're covered under the, currently under the manufacturer's warranty, that if you deploy them, they'll, there's nominal costs in replacing the actual spikes in them.
Okay, gotcha, but there's a cost associated with that, too.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Nothing from the attorney, sorry, Bill.
I just think the name sounds like a WWF rustler I used to know when I was a kid.
A safe, a safe, a safe, nice rustler.
See, he's already got it, he gets it, he gets it.
Yeah.
All right, so, this is obviously a minimal, it's, it says that it's amendment to the pursuit policy, but it's not identifying it as an ordinance.
If, if I may, oh, I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the, the police department's policies are not, are not ordinance.
Correct.
They, they're department. I thought there were certain ones that were.
Certainly portions of our ordinances mandate certain police conduct, but, but the chief is just asking for an amendment to the department's pursuit policies to enable or authorize the use of this device.
That being the case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
I'll keep your pulses, thank you.
Chief.
That takes us to reports of committees, commissions, boards.
Two A.
Sorry, did I miss?
Arrowhead Drive.
Oh, sorry. Um, consideration of resolution twenty-five dash twelve, twenty-eight forty-nine, a preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise specialist subsequent police powers under section sixty-six point zero seven oh three, Wisconsin statute for street improvements to Arrowhead Drive, brought forth by the Public Works Committee, Dan, are you still there?
He is still there.
I'm still here.
Sorry about that. Good evening.
It's, it's all in good fun.
I'll buy a donut tomorrow morning, Mayor, he'll be happy, so.
He's watching Stranger Things in the background.
Uh, do you want to share anything, as you did with personnel and finance, about this?
Yes, if I can, Mayor, I'd like to just provide a brief summary to City Council. Okay, the, the resolution tonight is the first reading, second reading will be on December fifteenth, the resolution is the city's intent declaration to exercise special assessment powers for improvements to Arrowhead Drive, the assessment district is Arrowhead Drive from Boats Lane to Wild Haven Avenue, there are fourteen parcels within this district that will be assessed for street improvements, per city ordinance, sixty percent of the reconstruction costs will be assessed to the fourteen properties, the remaining forty percent is the city's, the city's cost. In the past, the city has established eight installments, or eight years, to pay back the assessments, as of right now, that is what will be in the assessment report that will be presented in January, the letters were mailed to each of the fourteen parcel owners on November twenty-first, giving them a preliminary assessment cost for their parcel, we will have the public hearing for the assessments at the January fifth City Council meeting, the public notice has been sent to the leader independent and should appear in the December fourth edition, that said, I think we've accomplished everything as part of the preliminary assessment resolution, we've met all the requirements for the notice, and as you can see, the assessment district is, is in front of you right now, highlighted in green, there's also the ordinance and just a brief description also included in the packet for Arrowhead Drive, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, um, as was pointed out in personnel and finance, this is actually one of the few streets left in all of Manona that doesn't have curb and gutter, and Doug pointed out, being our local historian, that it didn't used to be the case, there used to be a lot of streets of Manona that needed curbed gutter, that's the only time there's an assessment, we don't assess for sidewalks, so, um, so, that's the good news, right? Any questions about this, if you can turn to Dan?
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Did, so we're voting on it December fifteenth, but is, did I hear right that the public hearing on it's not until January, is that normal?
This is just the first step in the, the legal process to specially assess property, so, this is basically directing Dan and staff to prepare a report, and then after that's done, the report will be specific as to what's going to be done and how the costs will be apportioned, then it'll come back to this body for approval of a final resolution.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, again, any questions can go to Dan, this is, this is new business, so we'll see it again on the fifteenth.
Actually, Dan, I just thought of something, can you just refresh my memory, what's the current width of that street, it says it's going to be finished with a thirty feet, and I'm trying to, it's narrower than that, right, right now?
Yeah, I don't have the information in front of me, but I believe it might be twenty-eight feet from asphalt edge to asphalt edge right now.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Dan.
Yep, thank you.
So that takes us to reports of committees, commissions, boards, mayor, city administrator, city attorney, department manager, sustainability efforts and diversity equity and inclusion efforts, and in the interest of letting them go home, going to ask, do you have anything that you would like to share with us? Chief?
We already talked about shopping, right? Yes, no, so no, no, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, is there anybody online, staff online, like Jerry's still there, chief?
Jerry and Will are still here.
I am, and I have no report, I'll just say thank you for the comments tonight.
Okay, thank you, and it looks like Will is also online, Will, do you have anything? No, okay, that being the case, I'm going to start down at this end with Rick, coming up.
No report.
No report. Teresa?
No report.
Brian?
No report.
Wow, I must have worn them all out. Doug?
Wow, I hate to break this. MPO, MPO meets Wednesday, should be a very short meeting, and there's also the Beltline Study Committee, Study Group is having a virtual public information, public involvement meeting on Thursday, this Thursday at five thirty, there's information on DOT's website about how to attend.
Thank you, Patrick?
No report.
Rachel?
Um, just real quick, Public Safety met last week Wednesday for a very quick pre-Thanksgiving meeting, but did go over some recommended changes to the use of horse policy, just updating with standard language, so.
Okay, thank you. Elaine?
For anyone that is rerunning or interested in rerunning for council, I have packets available in my office for pickup.
Neil?
Just since Director Stefani stepped off, just wanted to have a couple comments, obviously, regarding the little weather event we had this last weekend, I think all in all, I think crews responded very well, had pretty good reports and everything, had a couple of concerns that leaf collection is done, well, unfortunately, under twelve inches of snow, we're not going to be able to continue doing that going forward, but all in all, it was pretty good, and we did have an issue, if folks noticed on Manona Drive, the, the drive lanes were nice and clear, but none of the turn lanes were cleared, so Director Stefani had a little conversation with the folks at Dane County, asking if they would correct that, so, I don't know if it was just an oversight or what happened there, but we are going to do a, staff's going to meet on Thursday, real quick, chief scheduled that on our, to just kind of do a recap of the event and see if there's anything we might have done a little bit better, we had some, some challenges, I think, with, with vehicles not moving and, and having to be towed and ticketed a little bit, and just trying to figure out if there's a better way to get the word out to some of those areas where we know there's some problem areas, but all in all, I think the overall response was very, very positive, so, kudos to our public work staff, and it is actually Snowplow Appreciation, Snowplow Driver Appreciation Day today, actually, it's a real thing, it actually is today.
It's a national holiday.
It is, it's, it's, it's a good day, it's a good thing, so, certainly thank your, thank your local drivers, both locals, local county and state, when you see them, so.
Neil? I was noticing on my walk today that the bus stop pads are very nicely cleared of snow also, they did such a great job on that, too.
Yeah, I would just, I was, I was going to say the same thing, I was just, got an opportunity to spend some time over the weekend over in Madison after the snowstorm, too, and the difference is really day and night, and that's not to, certainly not to knock Madison in any way, but we all know that our public works crew is fantastic, and because we're able to call a snow emergency and get the folks to largely move their, you know, we get our streets cleared very well, so, kudos to public works, that's all I have to report as well, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Actually, Mayor, you have appointments.
Oh, sorry. Uh, yes, I have appointments, that would be, I am number I, Committee Service Committee, effective immediately, myself, Sukar's chair, Jennifer Kerr, Chris Marsh, and Melissa Eats, and then Matt Arrows to Landmark Commission, Charles Bugs to the Transit Commission.
Move to approve.
And I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the appointments are made now, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.